The 21st, 2025, you'll stand for the invocation and remain standing for the legislative allegiance. Lord, we ask you to look at the homeless and sick and get them back into society. Also, Lord, we ask you to look at our first responders, our police, our fire, and those that are taking over on a 24/7. Also, we ask you to look at the armed forces, especially those within our local area that are serving on the armed forces. And what we do tonight, we do for the good of the entire city and not for anyone particular interest or anyone's particular project. And we do all of this in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My kids say it's exciting. It's just I throw it out, throw it out. I say it's always good.
You're not helping me on this.
Still got to fizzle. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to City Council. I got Belinda Nitschke taking the minutes this evening. Our city clerk, Frank Wickman from Wickman Associates. Good evening, Mr. Wickman.
Good evening.
Good to have you. Belinda, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Varlage?
Here.
Mr. Messmer?
Here.
Mr. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Shriver?
Here.
Mrs. Spears?
Here.
Dr. Spilly?
Here.
We do have a corps this evening, and welcome. Glad to have you as well. With that, we have also on the agenda the citizens wishing to be heard that's not on the legislative edition. Does anybody would like to talk this evening, this afternoon?
Yeah.
Come forth and state your name and your address, and welcome.
Hi, my name is Mark Grubbs.
You can move that microphone up.
Okay. My name is Mark Grubbs. I currently live in Crescent Springs, Kentucky, and I have a contract to purchase a house at 29 Edgewood Road. This house will be a rental property. What's unique about the rental property is that I'll have sober living residents living within the property. And so I've been in contact with Kenton County zoning and planning, just making sure that I'm covering my bases, that there's no ordinances or laws or anything like that that would prohibit 10 to 12 women living in a house in Edgewood, Kentucky. And so that's why I'm here, is just to kind of throw that out there and find out if there's any kind of issues at all from the city's perspective.
We're all looking at you now. He's bought the rental property, and you're having how many?
It would be 10 to 12.
May I ask how many bedrooms are there?
There's four bedrooms, and most likely it'd be about two in a room.
So it's a rental property, but they're not separate quarters? They're common quarters?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to check our zoning orders, but you already have been to planning and zoning. What'd they have to say about it?
There was a memorandum in 2021 that discussed this, and pretty much it looks like there was nothing preventing me from doing it. They said that if I had paid staff or certified counselors, it would be an issue, which there were no paid staff or certified counselors. I think a lady brought up the sort of the short-term rental thing, the Airbnb thing, whatever, but that didn't seem to check out in terms of what I'm doing.
It's the issue they had in Lakeside Park a couple of years ago, and I think that's what generated that memorandum. My recollection is that there is nothing to prohibit you from the use that you're proposing, but of course, all the residents and you would have to abide by all the traffic laws and rules and regulations as such. But as far as the principal concern about whether or not that kind of residential use is prohibited, the answer is no, it is not. And you're, as far as I'm concerned at this point, allowed to operate that type of, or operate to use, have that kind of use in that zone.
Did PDS mention anything about the number of occupants not being family members in the house and living under single quarters and not having the appropriate number of bathrooms or any of that?
They didn't make mention of that when I was talking to them. I was certainly looking for information.
I'm not indicating that there is, but I believe I've heard that there are some regulations involving the number of occupants you have in the house that are non-family members living in the same quarters. And then you would have to keep in mind, we do have a nuisance ordinance, and if these people do drive, I know a lot of them do not drive, they don't have vehicles and stuff, so that would be handled. But if the number of cars, let's say there were 12 vehicles, you might get complaints, and that would cause a nuisance, and we might be able to take some actions on the nuisance.
Right.
I do believe that normally these are very quiet residents. They don't like to be bothered. They don't want to cause anyone to bring attention to them. So as long as that's the case, they, I'm sure they have household chores to do.
Yes.
Yard maintenance and for that.
Yep, that's right.
I would suggest you introduce yourself to the neighbors.
For sure.
Provide a contact if somebody's managing the property.
For sure.
Who's managing the property to give them a feeling as if they have a direct contact that they can update you or something.
That's great. I appreciate that.
Mr. Grubbs, you said that you purchased it, or is Mr. Wang still in the property?
He still owns the property. I have a contract that I signed on Saturday agreeing in principle to purchase the house.
Well, again, welcome and good luck. Thank you very much for bringing it forth. But at the same time, as you can see, there's no barricades at this point in time.
Thank you, guys.
Is there anything that Chief Crynis, or is there anything you want to add to that? You will be the one called.
Yeah, I'm not directly. I think we already have other sober living homes within the city.
We do.
Generally, the complaints that arise from those are partly related because you have so many people living in one residence on street parties. So I would try to address that.
Yeah. It's got a long driveway, and then there's space at the top where that can be, they can park for sure. But yeah, to your point, not a lot of them drive at this point. I know, like I'll have to address, there's a bedroom in the basement, and there's no window in that bedroom. And I think that's an ordinance where you have to have some sort of egress. So I know that's something I'll have to address immediately as well. But besides that, I can't think of anything else.
Do you mind if I ask if you're doing this under a organization, a nonprofit, or are you doing it under a company name?
Well, I own some rental properties, just as for profit, and then this will be another one.
That will be the next call that I will get, is do they have a business license? Are they paying, is the owner of the property paying the appropriate license for the business that you're operating? Or is the nonprofit exist or whatever? So I'll get some of those calls. So I would just make sure that you have the appropriate occupational license and stuff for the, to operate in Kent County.
Okay. Excellent.
Mr. Grubbs, I'm glad that you're here doing this. And in my experience with these kind of things, the most frustration arises when the property owner is not responsive to headoff complaints. So this shows me that you're doing the right thing upfront. I just would expect that it would be a close relationship going forward as well.
Yeah, understood. Thank you.
Thanks you very much for coming. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
With that, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forth that's not on the agenda this evening? I guess so. This would be the time to do it. But if not, I'll go to the agenda. Does anybody want to add anything to the agenda or rearrange?
Mayor Chief Dickman is not here. He's on a run currently, but he was going to ask council if they would consider placing the approval of paramedic job description on the agenda for discussion and possible approval. But it's been passed out, and we did send it out late notice. So if, but we do need to try to get this approved and down to the CERS.
Well, Brian, let's just put that as our new business on number 20 from the standpoint of discussing on the appointment aspect of it. And if he's here, fine. If not, you're pretty well, we're pretty well at the first on what's going on and just get everybody else on board as well. But anyway, we do have in front of us June 16th minutes. I would entertain a motion in a second and any corrections that need to be done for that. Well, if not, I'm going to go to sleep. Who is it? Who's going to do it?
I'll make.
Somebody make a motion here.
I'll make the motion to approve the June 16th.
Ben, okay. And Rob, okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Varlage?
Yes.
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
Dr. Spilly?
Yes.
The minutes for the June 16th, 2025 minutes stands as presented. So thank you very much on that. I just, from the standpoint of getting on board with the mayor's report here, I want to thank the administration. I want to thank the sheriff's department. I want to thank our police department chief and our fire department and all the cadets from the standpoint of helping out at the Fourth of July parade. It turned out to be, I think, very successful. The weather was nice. We had, they said this was one of the biggest parades we've had in a long time, and maybe that's because we had Krogers with so many of their flows as well. But at the same time, it added to it, and everybody enjoyed it. But again, from the standpoint, it's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes to put on this from the standpoint of the barricades, the cones, the tri-state running that took place as well earlier in the morning. From the standpoint, it was a very successful day. I want to also say, and I don't know if anybody's heard from the comments, but I've heard comments, I've heard texts from the fireworks, from the standpoint, the fireworks, they thought were exceptional this year. From the standpoint, I guess because of that consistent from the standpoint of that small sparkling, would you say, or what was ignited in that period of time, and it was a lengthy period of time as well. We've asked Lucas from the standpoint of when he's coming and signing the contract for next year, that we have that in that area as well from the standpoint, so we can be entertained as, again, or we can be entertained with something different or more than above. But it just seemed to be something that everybody really enjoyed. And from the standpoint, I just want to say that people took the time out to thank us for what we put on for them. And again, they were very pleased how it went on. So again, it was a great event, a good time, good day. And I just want to say to everyone, thank you very much. And of course, the residents coming out and participating, it was a good day. And we had the coastal, or the diving center was the grand marshal this year, Central Coastal Diving. And Mr. Evans and his family were very pleased with that as being a business within the areas of Edgewood for the number of years. And they were very pleased to be the grand marshals as well. I think next year, we're going to have the grand marshal, vehicles going to have who they're from.
Yeah, I thought they would have done that.
Yeah. And that was fine. The other thing is, but Tom knew more people than I did. He was, they were, so I mean, there's a lot of people going down to the dive centers, but at the same time, I kept my hand going, but his was going crazy. So he really enjoyed it. But at the same time, somebody said, it would be kind of nice to have a banner on there as to who they're from, you know, which is, so we will do it. We will do it. It will be done. The mayor's meeting again is going to be this Saturday at, let's see, where are we going to, where are we going to meet? We're going to meet at the Elsmeere. We're going to meet at the Elsmeere.
Last Saturday.
Huh?
Last Saturday.
The 19th. I mean, he was last Saturday.
Last Saturday.
Yeah.
Today's the 21st.
There's more Saturdays.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
I missed it. Boy, you can see where I've been. I've been traveling a lot. So okay, all right. Anyway, I'm still going to meet with Jessica on the other part as well. With that, I'll jump into other staff reports that we have. Well, before I do that, I did the swearing in the other night, the other afternoon for the Golden Age Senior Citizens Officers. The president this year is Janice Marcus. The vice president is John Hamilton. Treasurer is Carol Schaefer. Recording secretary is Kara Farley, and corresponding secretary is Ada Gartnett. So those are the new members for the, up and coming for the Golden Age seniors. And they had to be sworn in the other afternoon. So they're all on board and ready for more trips. Anybody who'd like to go on some of their trips, see Carol, and she'll sign you up. You don't have to be a golden age. You don't have to be any particular age if you want to go on one of the trips that they have. They're going to Niagara Falls, I think, next month. But if you're interested, get ahold of Carol. She's very interested in that. Tonight, we do have the staff reports, and then we'll start off with Brian's report. Any questions with Brian? If not, I'll jump in the city clerk, Belinda. Fire, Tom's not here, but we could fill in if need be. General services, Rick?
I think, I just had one question if we knew, actually, two questions. Number one, if we had timing for the crosswalk striping that we had on the docket for this year. And secondly, I saw, it looked like the timeline for Tutman and Dudley was protracted. I didn't exactly understand what that meant about, it said the project was going to extend in October, but I didn't know if that meant.
The road will be fully drivable. What we're waiting on right now is the final utility poles that will be the final poles that sit in place. They're just very hard to find. We've checked with Duke to see if they would sell us some. We checked with the state. They won't sell us any. They're ordered, independent upon when those come in, that will finalize the project. But the project will be pretty close to maybe just a final, that last little coat that goes on, because we have to wait for the school to finish their construction as well.
Okay.
So that would be the whole, but the road will be, it'll be driving on all, on the newer lanes, and the old lanes will be gone.
Yeah, I think my concern was that there's going to be lane disruption and traffic disruption.
There will not be.
Schools start sparing early this year.
Yeah, so there, yeah, it does. And that's what we met the other day to talk about that. And I was surprised that it's like the 13th of August or something.
Yeah.
So I think the school's panicking more than we're panicking, because as you could see, we're ready to flip traffic and start on the other side. They're not even close. I mean, if you go back there, it's, there's really no pavement left, and it's gone, and they're trying to get that put back in. The biggest, I guess, the obstacle that's going to cause traffic in the beginning will be the lights are going to be on a timed sequence, and that timing will hit no matter what.
Yeah.
Whereas the light system that we have there works off of a camera eye, and it's picking traffic up and operating traffic as the AI system thinks it needs to operate, which is way more efficient. So we may have a couple months of just lower efficiency of the traffic system, of the lighting system to try to get it into the, in there. But
I might suggest we consider just, that first week of schools, always private transport.
Yeah.
So I might suggest that we just proactively consider manual traffic.
So we've done a couple things. When we met the other day, we talked about, and Rick, jump in if I misspeak, or if you want to add something to it. But we talked about the fact that we would have multiple crossing for children to get in. We always have the school SRO is out there to help with traffic flow. But the biggest issue we're going to have is if the school can't handle the volume on their property, you can't direct people to go anywhere. You're not, you can't, they're sitting there. And I think Chief Crynis and Jamie will tell you, it's horrible when they're backed up, someone's wanting to turn, and all the cars are backed up to school, and you can't tell them to turn, and everybody's screaming. So, but you're right, we will make sure that those first couple weeks. The school supposedly is going to get out a lot of information right before it happens to try to make sure that all the parents know that first week, especially for your first graders, that those parents, grandparents, whoever may not understand the traffic flow. And then we'll start posting on social media to let the other people that don't have children understand that there may be backups to leave early. But
Yeah, I mean, you're going to have Pius starting at probably 6:30 a.m. all the way through, probably about 9:00 a.m., you know, in Dale. And then plus, if there's a way to get the word out to St. Elizabeth's employees and patients.
We have a contact that we do that with as well. And
That's usually the surge of volume that, that's the straw that breaks the camel.
Yeah, they're staggered enough that they all don't hit at the same time. But they just, it's just continuous from 7:15 till, like you said, maybe 9 o'clock. We have a continuous one or the other is starting to make the traffic back.
It's 6:30. I mean, I play Frogger getting out of my neighborhood starting at 6:30.
So, so anyway, yes, it will not be, we've already talked about that. It's not fun for us, so we try to do everything we can.
Well, appreciate that.
Yep.
And then timeline around crosswalk striping?
I'm not sure I understand that question, Dr. Spilly. We did the crosswalk striping that we bid out for last year's fiscal year. And then this year, we do have some striping to do, but I'm not sure we have like large, no, other than Dudley, when we get that project completed.
Yeah, we talked about it.
If you just give me, if you could, maybe afterwards, give me specific areas that you're interested in, and I'll make sure that we address those issues. But
Yeah, I know there's at least two on Thomas More, but all the ones along Turkeyfoot and Edgewood, not cross Turkeyfoot.
I do remember we talked about those. So he talked about the sides on Turkeyfoot, like at Walker Estates and on down through Colony or Colony. All of those are not properly marketed and painted out as crosswalks. So if we could get those on. And then the other side as well, I'm sorry, like Edgewood-Lindale as well on the other side, if we could stripe those.
Okay.
I apologize. You're correct. We talked about this.
No, it's good. I just want to keep it top of mind. I mean, I think everybody knows what happened recently.
Yes, sir.
With that. And I did reach out to the state saying, hey, you know, I mean, we can't touch one across Turkeyfoot is my understanding, but
That is correct.
We've got two schools right next to each other, and there's virtually no crosswalks there.
Right. We will have striping on Tutman and Charter. It just will not be all four. It'll actually be a crossover, I believe, Rick. Is that correct? And then another cross. Because the school won't have the one sidewalk completed, so we don't want to put them on that side.
Sure.
Because there's no sidewalk. So but the Crossing Guard will be able to handle that.
I think we have Village to pick up, and then Charter Oak, and then one of Magnolia is still left from last time.
And I believe those we could stripe now, correct? Because they've done the work on those.
The ones that were part of the current Dudley Charter Oak project were not striped earlier. They will be striped as part of the project. Okay.
They're included in the bid that we did, have them striped.
Good. Well, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Rick, I noticed in your report that you were talking about changing out speed sign on batteries. Is that under your purview, or is that the police department's?
Can you repeat that?
We do that.
Speed signs?
Yeah, so general services, they keep them charged down at general services, and then they know which ones to do, and then they just go around and change the batteries out for the ones.
Those are the permanently installed ones.
That is correct, sir.
Two times, two times a week, we go out. I think it's at least two. It could be three times a week, we go out, two to three times, we go out, check the batteries, switch them out because they only last so long, and take them back. Reboot it out, put them in, take the others back, charge them out.
Do we still have, and this is years ago, the temp records where we install them on either street signs?
We have, we have those, and we also have what are called stealth.
Is that kind of data collection more than it is?
Just data collection. Doesn't show how fast the driver is going, but it does allow us to collect data on the street. That allows us to see how fast they were going, generally speaking.
Vehicles, a vehicle.
What type of vehicle it was.
Okay. Can I ask, I've had multiple people approach me talking about Village, and you probably have heard this as well, Village and Lindsay, they were pretty adamant about being heard. There's been a lot of, and it kind of dovetails into the whole heat bike scooter thing too, but there's been a lot of complaints about people speeding up and down on Village and Dudley.
So what we can do is, is Chief Crynis will take that one. And just keep in mind that we have, and you know that we have an officer that handles speed complaints, and then they kind of prioritize those and then give them to Rick to where he needs to move them. So I see that the chief is writing that down as well, and he'll make sure tomorrow that that's one of them. But in the process of going through that, Jamie, I'm sure the chief will tell the staff, hey, could you please do more patrol of that area, watch it a little bit more, and make sure we can, because that's the first phase. They just kind of watch it to make sure.
It'd be good to get some without marked vehicles out there, what actually is going on, to legitimize the complaint or not, right?
Yes.
And that's, that was what I've said to them is, hey,
It takes
Give us license plate numbers. If you, if you see someone who's specific, tell us exactly who's doing it. But they said it's so, they, multiple people have said it's, it's all the time. And I get it. They've got kids there. They're worried about it. So if we can, if we can take a look at it, I appreciate it.
It's the neighbors. It's the neighbors.
I can tell you that right now.
I mean, you know that too.
Yes.
It's someone, it's someone in the neighborhood.
And Mayor Link, you understand, that's a deep neighborhood. There's a lot of cars back there. So you can't just say it's the guy next door, the girl next door.
No, no, no.
It's sending them way back.
We'll make sure that it goes through the right process.
Yeah.
And we'll get them up, and we'll make sure it goes through that whole process. The stealth boxes, then the ones that say slow down to see if the stealth box has had any impact. Then we'll take them down, and we'll do patrol, and they'll run to see if they can slow it down by that, maybe issue warnings, citations if needed, that kind of stuff, and then see if we can get it. It picks up right now, I believe, in the fact that we have kids that are getting, their driver license, right, were in the summer. So their high speeds are hitting because of that until school goes back, and then it kind of dies down a little bit again.
I remember.
Summertime is a major complaint year because kids get their license and they're off and going. So
Rick, I did have one more question. I apologize for the report that you gave. A friend of mine lives on Wild Rosen, was asking about the repairs, and actually said, hey, thank you for doing that because of how crumpled the edges have been. My question is about Craftsman. Are we doing that field dirt, or is someone else doing that field dirt?
The developer, the builder, is bringing the field dirt in.
So are they helping us with the cost of replacing the edge of their roads instead of the one who degraded so much?
No, it's a publicly owned and maintained road. So the responsibility goes to the city to fix the road when it becomes a disrepair.
Okay. Yeah, a couple issues with that one, and when we look back in that one. Those roads were never constructed to even handle the, any of the traffic that's going on at all to begin with. So it's difficult to get on a developer or anybody, even if it was just one house being built or having construction unto it, or the garbage truck or anybody else. When we peel that street up, it's city bump dirt. I mean, it's, it was not built and constructed to handle modern traffic. So we have that as a future street that we'll look at once we get to a percentage of build on that, and then we'll go back and try to figure out how we bulk that street up to handle. Even those, what, 12 new houses, 14 new houses, I mean, that just had stress on the road as well, and it was already failing. So
Part of the problem was when the truck was, that large dual axle trucks were going down the street. We had a car parked on the opposite side of the street in the legal parking zone, but it was a larger car. It was a narrow street. So the large trucks had to hug the edge of the road. And when we did the full depth repair, we found that the thickness of the road was like an inch or two thick. And as you know, a public road needs to be about an inch thick. So there was nothing there to support it.
Well, again, they said thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I know in your report, you mentioned the scooters, and I know, can't solve the scooter problem.
Number one complaint.
Can we talk about the scooter problem just for?
Yeah, I sure can.
I, you know, we've all seen them speeding by. I've got a 12-year-old grandson who has a scooter.
Yep.
And they go fast.
Scooters and electric bikes, right?
Yeah. At least an electric bike is a little higher. It's a little bit more of a substance.
Yeah, it just goes a lot faster. You know, they can go 25 mile an hour down a sidewalk. So
Yeah, I mean, with the scooters, has ever, has been talked about to approach the kids themselves while they're driving, while they're riding, and say, you guys got to be careful. You got to slow down. They may or may not hear that message from their parents. You know, could someone in a position of authority say, you need to slow down. You could be a danger to someone walking along with a baby stroller.
Right.
Or an elderly person taking out, taking out or walk. I mean,
Yeah, I think Chief Crynis can talk about that with his leadership team to find out if there's a strategy in which they can stop when they see it.
More, yeah, more of an education.
Yeah, we, outside of the police department, we would not want like public works or anybody talking with people regarding that. But maybe Chief Crynis can.
Yeah, I mean, if our officers are on patrol and they see something that's obviously unsafe, they're more than likely going to, going to get out with the children or the vehicles that are involved and try to provide some of that education. We also have been trying to get out in front of that a little bit with some public service announcements we've been putting out. We've put them out, I think, just between the police department's page and the city's page. I think we've done one a month on Facebook every month since March, and maybe two in July. So, you know, we are aware that it is a concern for the public. You know, we do, you know, understand that the kids don't pay, they're not trained in driving the way that your average driver is, and even your average driver sometimes struggles to drive safely. So, you know, we're trying to educate the public, but, you know, Facebook only has so much reach. So I'm certainly open to other ideas and options for that public information campaign if anybody has them.
I guess I was thinking, you said if there was an unsafe situation, you'd stop them and talk to them. Could you talk to them when it's not an unsafe situation, when it's normal? And just say, look, you know, do you know that you could potentially be a danger to other people?
Sure, I can encourage our officers to make contact with children in the neighborhood and things like that. Sure.
Just a thought.
I think, chief, you know, overall, they've been pretty, pretty conscious of what's going on. The kids on the scooters, from the standpoint, I've watched them with the intersections from the standpoint, they they do slow down or stop and then of course go through the intersection. So I think the kids are, they're pretty well savvy on, on how to, how to operate those and it's marvelous. It really is.
Mayor, not to be contrary, but I've witnessed some, some horrible decisions. And again, they're 12 years old, 11 years old, 10 years old. I've, I've watched, now, yesterday, running across the front here, a young man rung his little bells, he approached me from the back and he passed me to the left just like the information was said that he's supposed to. There is good behavior out there, but I think we need to either.
Oh, I agree, Jamie, we need to.
Continue to educate, I don't, maybe little cars passed out. I know a lot of officers probably rolled their eyes if they're giving up a stack of cars to hand out that have the directions or.
Yeah, we might even be able to put something together with the school resource officers with school beginning in a couple of weeks to maybe try and work with the schools to get some of this education out direct to the children as opposed to depending on, you know, social media and parents to pass the information along as well. So that's certainly something we need to consider.
Yeah, I think you can do those kinds of things. You know, the, you know, I'm going to be just very transparent and blunt. First of all, we all rode our bikes the way we rode them when we were jumping curbs and driving through the neighbor, the yards. We were coming up on people on sidewalks and out in the middle of the road and stopping cars when we did it. This is just a generational thing of, they now have scooters and bikes that are electric. We dealt with skateboards, we've dealt with bikes, we've dealt now with this issue and everything and trying to get it. And the complaints vary from, well, you need to get them off the sidewalk and on the road. You need to get them off the road and you got to get them on the sidewalks, you know? And so we go back and forth with it and so we have to figure out how they can coexist in that environment of someone who believes they're going way too fast and they're going to kill someone or run me over with. They went by me and they went on the left and they just went on their way, right? To, they're going too fast, so. It, it's a tough one for all of us to figure that out. You know, we get calls, can, can council make a law saying they have to wear a helmet? You know, someone, they're not wearing helmets and they got, and so we get, that's the complaints we're getting that are very difficult to deal with because it, it's a hard manageable thing that kids now have scooters that they get to ride on. We probably ought to be more worried about the fact that are they going to become obese because they don't pedal anymore or have to push the thing versus the fact that they're riding down the streets and getting wrecked on it because we all wrecked on our bikes and skateboards if we had them and that kind of stuff. So it's tough and I think we just keep pumping away at it. If we can catch some of the kids, if they are doing something that an officer, somebody sees to catch them real quick and say, hey, that's just bad behavior, you could hurt that individual or yourself that we don't want, those kinds of things I think would be, are very good to do it. You know, we banned skateboards in places when skateboards came out and then eventually everybody stopped worrying about it because they made noise and people were jumping steps and everybody was going to get hurt on the sidewalk because a skateboard came by and we got over that one and it kind of calmed, but I've only seen, I could probably name, I could probably pick, pick out the ones who are riding their scooters and bikes. It seems like it's about the same 10 kids that have them that are in groups or whatever. There's a group that have their fishing poles every day, you see, they're going somewhere to fish.
Yep.
And they're riding them and I know the same two or three that are riding the bikes on them and stuff, so.
Yeah, I think, I like the education campaign. I think it's a really good idea. I think it's.
We have an adult on bike.
It's not punitive, right? It's, it's educational, it's trying to get out ahead of it as opposed to just being reactionary and letting some kid get smacked upside by a car, so.
Yeah, we had an adult hit one of our cars on an electric bike one day.
Yeah.
We had them pulling out of the city building and they were coming down through and they went to, I mean, they were just sitting out and they just bam and hit the side of it and.
Brian, you could go in stealth mode and hop on a scooter.
I would like that.
Yeah, undercover.
Yes, we need to get, I'll do that. Then you'll get complaints that there's some old guy trying to ride a scooter and he keeps wrecking it in places.
Has he registered yet?
He's not going to hurt someone else, he's going to hurt himself if we don't get him off of it, so. But you're right, Jamie, getting out ahead of it, educating a lot, doing some of those things, but it, it's, it's tough on us because we do, we get people screaming at us that kids are riding their scooters in the streets. On some of the side streets, they probably should and they're yelling at them, getting them on the sidewalks. And then the next call we get is, kids are riding on the sidewalks and they need to ride those things in the streets. So it's hard, but we don't want anybody to get hurt.
Do it safely. Chief, thank you very much. I guess basically that we've gotten through the police report, but the only thing is, is a recreation and we have the concerts in the park and they've been doing very well. Even last week, even though with the high humidity and the heat, we had a good crowd. It was a well, well attended and Lucas told me that they, they enjoyed the band. They really enjoyed the folks that were in last week, so, and they were a new, they're a newcomer, so.
On that note, just a little bit for everybody, this is Lucas's first run, you know, this is new to it. Hey, and I think Belinda will agree, he is just on a, a knock it out of the park job and handling some of that stuff. So I just want to give him kudos to the work he does and how he's doing it. So he's doing a great job for his first run through. We typically, they struggle, you have to send someone to help, do some things. He's, he's handling it perfect, so he's been a great addition.
With that, I will jump into number 20, new business, if you want to talk, let's talk about.
Yeah, so as we were reviewing and job descriptions for pension and also hiring new positions in the fire department, we have two new hires, one is a paramedic only. We were looking at it and I think if you look at this job description, as a paramedic, it was put together, Chief Amen was here at the time when we stuck this together because we had hired an individual that was only a paramedic and we needed to pass a, we didn't have a paramedic only job description, so council passed that job description. But if you read through it, it was really just firefighter job description and it really didn't go into meeting the skills for not only being able to handle some firefighter duties, but being a skilled paramedic. So we made a few adjustments to that. We need to update this job description and send it to CERS, the pension system, and then have that on, on file to make sure that it does represent the paramedic only position. So that's really all we've taken out and you can see some of the strike throughs like non-hazardous task and firefighting. Well, it never went into that you needed to be able to handle other tasks as well. So we're just updating that and we would ask council to consider passing and updating this job description. It's just a mystery, so when we got it out and review it, we like to look at the ones that we're reviewing and see if there has to be any changes to it and we just noticed that.
So process wise, does someone need to make a motion to accept as proposed?
Dr. Spilly, that is correct.
With those corrections, yeah.
Yep. So I make the motion to accept as proposed with these corrections, effective date 7/21/25.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on it? If not, Belinda, call the rule, please.
Dr. Spilly?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mr. Barledge?
Yes.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
Mr. Thiel?
Yes.
Approval has been received on the Edgewood position description. Class title is paramedic and as stated by Dr. Spilly. Tonight, we do have municipal order 2025-07, which is surplus vehicles and I think you have a list of the number of vehicles that we have that are surplus. We need action on those to put them at option.
We will not be surplusing them tomorrow when you do it. We'll surplus them as vehicles come in. We've found with the lease program that we're going with now, a vehicle may get built at the factory and show up in three months and then we would just surplus one and then we would wait till the next one. This year, we've decided to surplus all of them at one time, that way when the vehicle comes. And when a vehicle is delivered, we have a period of time in which we have to turn the vehicle and trade it, vehicle back in for them to resell to get credit back toward the vehicle we just leased. So this year, we've just put them all on the list at one time to have them surplus and those are the vehicles that will surplus matched up to the ones we have. And all vehicles have been ordered with enterprise and we're awaiting acceptance from the factory and then they'll give us some dates that they think will arrive, but they think anywhere from three months to nine months, they'll just show up periodically, so.
But we'll use the vehicles meanwhile.
Yeah, we're going to keep using all the vehicles.
Vehicles are not surplus.
Yeah, they'll be used.
They're going to be used. The SRO officers, everyone's wanting it.
Yeah, that way if we, we happen to have, if, if a vehicle appears and it's say November where we have a cancel, council meeting because it's Thanksgiving, we would not be scrambling trying to figure out how do we get that surplus and then sent back to enterprise for pickup in, in the deadline time period.
I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve municipal order 2025-07.
Dr. Spilly? And Jamie? Second. Any further discussion on that? If not, call the rule, please.
Dr. Spilly?
Yes.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Barledge?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
Mr. Thiel?
Yes.
Approval has been given to municipal order 2025-07 on the surplus vehicles. Tonight, we do have some up and coming events. Tuesday night, of course, is the summer concerts in the, in the park, President's Park at 7:00 PM. The valet soul, valet and Tuesday night is the Blue, Blue Jelly is July the 29th and Mary, Marty Connor, August the 5th. Those are the up and coming concerts that we've got, so we've got one Tuesday night and we've got the 29th and we got August the 5th. The mayor's golf outing is August the 1st at Kenton County. Please call the city building for availability and for sponsorship.
I think we have one group left.
One left?
We have one left, yeah.
One foursome available.
One foursome left, so. Don't everybody call tonight but call in the morning. We will be, we are available, we've got one foursome left on, on that, so it's marvelous and thanks to all those people on the participation as well. The sun and moon night is August 30th and that's reachable for reschedule. That was the one that was in June. We, I think it was rain, is what we had on that one.